Morning. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns. Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And can I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, move on to regular business. We've got our public hearing.
This is a public hearing pursuant to SDCL 72122 for the purpose of adopting the following supplements to the 2022 budget, a supplement adding $250,000 to Board of Commissioners' budget for fees and contracts not budgeted for, $4,000 to Auditor's Budget for IRS penalty received in processing 1099s, $6,000 to Treasurer's Budget for training and supplies, $2,000 to Geographical and Information Services Budget because of mid-year wage increase, $4,000 to the postage revolving account change in accounting for the funds, $15,483.90 to the Highway Department to governmental expenses for wheel tax for cities, townships, paid more wheel tax out, $18,000 emergency and disaster for operating transfer in cash short because of wage increase, $762,218.75 to debt service, courthouse did a pay down of debt to increase agent fees, $45,000 to debt service, TIF number seven for additional principal payout.
Good morning.
Excuse me.
See, you don't need me to run through the request of all of the...
I don't. Are you asking for one motion on everything?
Um, I think we could probably do one motion, but we do, with it being a public hearing, we have to go through those.
Yeah. Is there anything you want to say about them?
No. Is there any questions you have regarding the statements that I put behind the reasoning for the budget supplements?
Any Commissioners have any questions for Sherry? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody either online or in the audience here today that wants to address this item? Seeing and hearing none, consider a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item two. Sherry, you got that one?
Yep. So, for the public hearing we just did, we did an increase in the emergency disaster fund to increase the cash in. Harold's account came in a little short for cash, basically because of the state's not quickness in depositing the money. And with the raise, it caused a shortness cash. So I just need to do an increase or a cash transfer for the $18,000 to cover his balance sheet. And then I need to approve automatic budget supplement in the amount of $24,405.36 to 101-4211-33123 and 101-4211-426000. It was a... I lost my words. It was for a grant from the state for bulletproof vests in the sheriff's office. So that's an automatic budget supplement for that grant.
All right, I've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I so moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item three?
So we are, as we go through our accounts receivable system, we are weeding out county aid liens that are lacking personal identifying information. They're on collectible accounts. So what we've got here is, I'm presenting about $64,865.72 in county aid liens that are lacking personal ID information.
Anybody have any questions for Sherry? Who tries tracking these people down? Is that your office or...?
Well, we have a process and procedure for compromising them. So these are old ones. They're from 1970 to 2000.
Okay.
So a lot of the information wasn't ever put in. We do have a new system where we don't pay a bill unless it's got identifying information and that we're able to lien them. So hopefully in the future, that should prevent the compromise. There are going to be more of these, you know, as we go through the system since, you know, there's quite a few on there.
Sure.
But this is just what we've got up to date.
All right. Thank you.
How old are some of these things? They did...
From 1970 to 2000.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, I mean, we can't even write them off as deceased because we don't know who they are. So there's no, it's just their names.
All right. I've heard the request. Can I get a motion, please?
Also moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, you call the roll.
Is there any public input?
Oh, yeah.
On any of these items?
It might be slim pickings today. Might be slim pickings today. Is there any public input on this item? All right, Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item.
So the next one is request for abatement on parcel 14926-D100. The request is in the amount of $1,064.76 for the year 2018 payable '20. It was submitted by the South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks, legally described as Spring Creek Country Club Edition, Track One in a government lot one in east half, northwest one quarter and southwest one quarter. Parcel is 14929-D100. This should have been exempt. So we're just asking to get this corrected.
All right. Any public input on this item? All right. Any questions by the Commissioners?
Just for clarity, Joel, maybe you know this answer. I was thinking that property, mostly described to as a golf course, was under a different entity other than Game, Fish and Parks to start with. Did that transfer now? Do you know?
Well, yeah, it's a good question, Commissioners. So I'm looking at the warranty deed right here that's in our packets. And what it shows is that back in 2017, the South Dakota Parks and Wildlife Foundation gave some land to the GF and P. My understanding is that the golf course itself is still owned by the Parks and Wildlife Foundation. So I think this is a separate parcel than the golf course. It's by it.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion? If not, Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Terry.
I think I'm up next.
You are.
All right. So we had bridge inspections done. This year, we have 151, I think, 150 structures that were inspected. In the packet, you'll have the sufficiency rating list, which is, if you want to read through that, you surely can, or otherwise you can take the other sheet, the Bridge, the 22 load summary list. So basically, that's explaining this sheet. Anything in green is, that's highlighted green on that sheet as you scroll through it. Those are structures that have been, had load ratings on them and are now legal loads.
What again?
They're legal loads. So basically, there's no restrictions on those, on those structures anymore. And we had four of them that went from some sort of restriction load rating to legal loads. And primarily, that is due to structure replacements. I believe one of them, um, one of them, I think, or maybe two of those, we may have done a little work to them and we were able to take the restrictions off. The next one is the yellow lines. The yellow ones, there should be 10 of those. Those are, those are structures which we had load ratings dropped. So if they had load ratings on them of 20 ton, it'd probably drop down to an 18-ton load restriction. And I'll say, of those 10 that we reduced load limits on, one of those was a legal load structure previous to this year's inspections. So that means only one of our structures that were legal dropped down into this category of being a restricted bridge. So that's kind of good news. You're only having one dropping down. But we do have, like I said, we got quite a few of them on the list here that still are restricted bridges.
So from 20-ton to what again?
No, that's just an example.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. And then the other one is the orange one on there. And that one is, we had two, two structures. Again, these are structures where load limits went up. So if it had a 20-ton rating on it, it may have went up to 24-ton. And again, a lot of that is, could be because of work we have done on the structures or such. So... Any questions on bridge inspections, the results from this year, the findings?
Anybody have any questions?
Are you pleased with them, Terry? Whatever.
Yeah, I think for the most part, yes. And I'll say, a lot, a lot of these were, restrictions are going down. They're on our list. They're in, they're, they're on our radar in the five year plan to have something done with them. I think if we look back through our structures, I think we're at about 35-ish structures that are in poor condition. So we're dwindling it down. I know when Steve first took over a while back, you know, I think we're close to 40 or over 40 bridges that were in the poor condition. So 10 years later, well, we're dwindling down on them. So, but...
Good job.
I will say one thing that I believe we've okayed this with the DOT, with the state. From now on, from this point forward, we're going to be doing bridge inspections. So, you know, normally, they're required every two years. So what we're going to do is, we're going to split the county up in half, and we're going to do inspections. They're going to happen every year on half the structures one year and then half the structures the next year. So we'll be having inspections done every year, but it's only going to be half of the, half of the bridges. Kind of, it's going to balance out budgeting wise, trying to budget the money instead of having all that money. Excuse me.
All right. Is there any public input on this item? All right.
All right. Next item I have is a bridge improvement grant. So I have a bridge improvement grant for a structure 42, 244, 255. This is going to be the Hudson Bridge. Again, you're probably asking why we are doing a preservation grant on this structure. This thing was built in 2009, but we noticed probably about four years ago on inspections that we have some, we have some issues underneath of the structure near the abutments. So we're going to be applying for a grant. Basically, they're going to come in and they're going to do a bunch of abutment law work, backfilling on this. Project wise, this is going to be probably set out, I can't remember what I have in my five-year plan, 24, 25 maybe to do this. Total cost of the project right now is estimated at $1.6 million. Again, we're going to be giving, hopefully, the grant. We're applying for 20% cost share on this. So the county share is going to be about $325,000.
Sean, did you want me to read? Whoa, there we go. Did you want me to read the whole resolution as a part of...
I would, I would leave that up to the chair. Would I, I can open it and read it if you would prefer.
Has that, has that been posted on our website?
It is posted, yes.
Then I don't think that's necessary.
Any questions on this preservation grant for this structure?
All right. If not, consider a motion?
Um, public comment?
Oh, public comment on this bridge? No? Okay. Thank you. Then I consider a motion.
I'll, okay. I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Erns, second by Gibbon. Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then you got another one?
And I have another one. So this next one, this is on the preservation grant application for 42-020-201. If you read through the facts and the vetting, this is a structure that we've applied for a preservation grant. We were awarded back in '21. We were awarded a grant for this structure. Last year, well, actually, it was this year, we went to bid with it. And that was the one here a few months ago that we rejected all bids because the bids came in like $1.1 million. And the grant at that time was only for like $515,000. So we're going to be applying for the overage of that structure cost. We're going to be applying for another grant, so hopefully they'll cover that. So this, this grant go around, we're looking, looking at, for about $490,000 additional money from the state on this project. The extra cost of the county is going to be about $125,000. So...
Anybody have any questions for Terry? All right. Any public comment on this item? All right. Consider a motion?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Seconded.
All right. I've got a motion by Schmidt, second by Commissioner Erns. Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the next item, I believe it's the next item I have is, we have an agreement with the City of T that I brought to you for your signature. So we've been in communication, or I have been, our staff has been in communication with the City of T about taking over some segments of roadway up there. I met with the city street guy up there here about a month and a half ago, two months ago. And we kind of talked about what his thoughts were on the condition of the roads, current conditions of those roads. And we just came up with some ideas of what he thought would be acceptable terms for them taking over the road. So basically, what they wanted, first of all, they wanted more money. They said, give us money like you did last time and we'll take over these roads. And I'm like, there's no money available. We can't keep giving out money. So what, what we had planned to do is, basically, I guess if you read through the agreement, if we sign it and they agree to these terms, then I will go through the process and start with the DOT to have these segments removed off of our inventory. And then from there, then a subset of this agreement, then we, the county, are going to, we're going to be responsible to do duties for each one of these road segments. The first segment is, I believe, is Segment One, which is just on the south side of T. They're looking at a half-mile section there. We have a culvert issue there. The agreement is, we're going to go in there, we're going to patch that culvert. We got to dig into the roadways. We're going to patch that culvert up, and then we're going to put a mat on that section with our county forces. And that's, that's going to take place in 2023. The other, the next section, I believe, Section Two, I think I have that, is the mile going north of T, north of 271 up to 85th Street. That segment in '24, we're going to do a mill and an overlay as a project on that section up there. And then once that section is, the project is done, then we will maintain the surface of that roadway for five years as a part of this agreement. I should have said on the first segment to the south, once we get done with that project in '23, they assume responsibility for the maintenance on that section. Then we are out on that one. The last segment is what we call the Airport Road, County Road 113. It's a half-mile section of roadway. In 2024, we're going to be doing a micro project on that. I'll just tag that on to our project on 106 in 2024. And once that project is done, then they assume control on that roadway. So the only one that we're going to have to do anything with after projects are done is, we're going to have five years of maintenance just on the asphalt surface on the stretch north of, north of the 271st. So...
That's good negotiations.
Yeah, I think they, well, so, so I know that this is what I had, what we kind of originally talked about with them, but I know that they would like probably longer terms on the maintenance on it. But I think, I think we get out five years. I think we're doing pretty good. I think that's long enough. So, but again, so what we're looking for is approval for this, for you to sign off on it. If you do, then we'll send it to the City of T. And then if they want to amend it or they want to sign off on it, then it would be, it'd be good to go. So...
And then, Terry, was this agreement vetted by our state's attorney's office?
Yes, it was. I was, I've been working with Joe Meter on this. So hopefully...
So the, so for instance, under number two, where it says the county agrees, and then you go to the second portion of that, where it says we'll proceed with a project, is that on all of those segments?
Nope. That's just on that segment. We have it listed out as projects. So on the very top, where we talk about the road segments, one, two, and three, that's Segment One, Segment Two, Segment Three. And then as you go down in the, in the agreement, you go below number two of Subset A, one, two, and three, that's Project One, Project Two, Project Three. Following?
What you...
Well, I follow, but it's not clear when I read this.
Okay.
To me, that that's what those numbers represent.
Well, I know...
So I think, I just think the segments need to be relisted in those sections under two on what we're agreeing to. Otherwise, I mean, I know what you're saying.
Yep.
I just, looking at this document, that isn't what it says to me.
Well, again, we can go back and I can, we can, Joe and I can hash it out and try to clarify it more. I know that, I believe he, he put in the word project on those.
Well, that's what I'm looking for, and I'm not...
Madam Chair, help me understand what, what it is that we need to clarify on this.
Well, this is the attorney in me coming out. You've got three different segments listed out.
Yep.
And then you have, the county shall perform maintenance duties listed for each segment of the asphalt roadway as follows. So when you get in there, it doesn't say which roadway you're talking about. It just assumes that the one, the section ones, two and three line up with each other. And a normal person may not read it that way, so I think it can be cleaned up.
So for clarification, could we put, I'm putting, Section One, could we put all of that verbiage in there about location of the roadway in the project, the county agrees part? Put all that in there with what the county agrees to do?
Yeah. I mean, I just think it's open for interpretation.
Would that be, would that clarify it more?
I don't, I'm not going, I don't want to micromanage it here during our meeting, but to me, it's...
But tell you what, I mean...
Open to more than one interpretation.
We can, I can go back with Joe and we can talk about it. I mean, figure, find a way to better clarify it.
I don't know. Commissioner Erns, are you looking at it?
Yeah, I'm looking for a definition of the term called the asphalt roadway.
Right. That's...
And the, the term, the asphalt roadway, there's multiple asphalt roadways referred to in Section One. So it's, it's not clear what it refers to. I mean, I think it refers to the asphalt roadway in Section, in Paragraph One of Section Two, but let's just flush it out.
Do you want an actual action to table this or just...
I would like, I'd like to hear from our state's attorney's office.
What we have done in the past is attach and exhibit that shows the sections of roads we're talking about. Maybe we need to do that in order to clarify it.
Well, right. I mean, it's just when I get down to Section Three, it does talk about county Project One, but above there, it doesn't specifically say that they're county, defined as county projects with numbers. I don't know. I'm probably being hyper-technical, but...
That's what we do for a living.
Yes.
We'll bring it back. We'll put a map with it. We'll define and identify them on the map, and then we won't have any questions.
Okay. So can I get a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do you want public?
Oh.
Oh, public.
Yeah, we can hear from the public now if you want. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right. Got a motion to table by Commissioner Erns. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Terry, Terry, from a non-technical standpoint, I think you did a heck of a job negotiating, okay?
So, so Joe...
We didn't give any money. We took care of it.
See, Joe, Joe put his little finesse touches on it. And I, like I said, I, I was just going by what, it'll be all right. It's all right.
It'll be fine.
It's only a draft.
All right. With that, any further discussion? All right. If not, Sean, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Next item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't know if I introduce myself, but Tracy Humphrey, Director of Human Resources. So in front of you all is the action to formally approve the elected officials, except for the Commissioners' wages, which will be presented in January. These are the wages that were budgeted for the 2023 fiscal year and are in line with the comparable market data. So just wanted to have you all look over that. The wages are, include the seven and a half percent cost of living adjustment that we've approved for the 2023 budget for all the employees and just including the elected officials in that.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right. If not, any public input on this agenda item? All right. Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Again, you said this was in line to county's appropriate size or population or, or what? Did you compare them to again?
Yeah. So there, we have all of the counties that were given to us from the market data a few years ago before my time. And so all of the counties, I talked with and looked at what their wages for their elected officials were. And we're right smack in the middle of that market. So, so that's, I think we have 10 to 12 different counties that we compare to. So most of them, if not all of them, are doing just the, for 2023, the cost of living adjustment for their elected officials. Some of them do an additional percent, but my recommendation is to fall in line with the cost of living this year.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. If not, Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item 10 on our agenda. Got a first reading, Sean?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning a portion, proposed Track One Johnson addition, approximately 4.25 acres of the property legally described as the west half of the northeast quarter, except railroad right-of-way, lots H1 and H2, Lewis Track One, that portion of west half of the northeast quarter lying north of railroad right-of-way, except the north 33 feet deeded to the City of Canton. Section 22 Township 98 North, right 49 West, Canton Township from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you. And since this is our first reading, we won't be taking any public comment on this agenda item today. We'll save that for... We'll save that for our second reading. Um, Sean, do you want to move on to the next?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning Lot Two Tempo addition, north half, the southwest quarter, section twenty-four Township one hundred North, right fifty-one West, Delapre Township, from the A one agricultural district to the C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you, same thing on this one, we won't be taking public comment today, we will save that for our public hearing. Move on to item twelve on our agenda. I've got Bill's name on it, we should have a, I don't know if he wanted a exec on this or not, Sherry, do you know?
Yes, executive.
Okay. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean, we call the roll.
Is this under STCL, um, two sub four?
This is going to be, yeah, one twenty-five, two sub four, and, uh, sub three as well, both of those.
And that was a motion by Aaron's and second by?
Gibbon.
Gibbon, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Poppins, your vote to go into executive session? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session? Got a motion and a second. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have a agenda item twelve, board action to approve and authorize the chair to execute a purchase agreement.
Susan. Is there a public comment?
And this is for, uh, five point three acres? Out by the airport.
Yes.
Correct, all right. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right, if not, is there a motion?
Otherwise, I'll move to authorize the chair to execute the agreement.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just so the public knows what's going on, the, the commission is, uh, wanting to purchase land out by the airport in order to, uh, comply with all these different FAA requirements and maybe do some expansion. And this, uh, will be eligible for a, uh, reimbursement grant from the FAA as well.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other discussion? All right, if not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We have our opportunity for public comment, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come up and say something? I got to take her. I think.
Probably only one.
Good morning, Harold.
Good morning, Harold Timmerman, Lincoln County Emergency Management. I would like to publicly commend our first responders in Canton, Worthing, and Harrisburg for the performance they had last week. We had two critical incidents within twenty-four hours. A house fire in Canton where we lost a lot of life, and a train accident by Harrisburg where two lives were lost, both traumatic. Some of the same people, uh, were at both incidents. And the, some of the same people helped with the recovery in both instances. You need to commend these people for the service that they do free of charge to this county and their different communities that they serve. I've been, uh, a first responder for a while, and none of this ever gets any easier when you lose lives like we did there. So, please, thank your first responders and commend them when you see them for the job that they did. The house fire in Canton was a ball of fire when it was called in. And that's, part of that structure is still standing, so, an excellent job was done to get the fire out. We were kind of suspecting there may be someone in there, but we couldn't, uh, verify that until the fire was out. And so, I worked with one of the family members, uh, brother of the lady that lived there during the fire. And, uh, he is a retired firefighter from Sioux Falls, so he can understand what we were going through. And, um, so it, uh, like I said, commend these people when you see them, they do one heck of a job. We did a quick diffusing after the Harrisburg incident. We did a, uh, critical incident stress debriefing in Canton Friday night for anybody that was involved with that too. So, trying to make sure these firefighters stay on the right track and, uh, and our, uh, ambulance and law enforcement personnel too. So, it's exact, it, it's taxing and traumatic when this happens, but they all seem to do fine. So, again, thank them whenever you get a chance.
Thank you, Harold. Commissioner reports. Do we have any? All right, consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, please call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, thank you.